I have six on the dot by my clock, so we will open the meeting. May I get a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Andriana.
Here.
Councilmember Joyner. Councilmember Carl Skent. Councilmember Lauritsen.
Here.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Here. A report from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. There is no reportable action on either item, but staff was given direction.
Thanks so much. Alright, we'll move on to Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Albert Schreiber has graciously agreed to get it up for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Alright, do we have any agenda modifications tonight?
No.
See none? Alrighty, we'll move on to presentations. Item 6A, the 10th anniversary of the propane rail car incident, and Chief Alves will be giving that up for us.
Good evening, Mayor Silhaj, councilmembers. I'm Matt Alves, your Public Safety Chief, and thank you for allowing me a few minutes tonight to discuss the tanker fire of 10 years ago. 10 years ago yesterday, the city Lincoln experienced a once-in-a-lifetime event that had the potential to cause massive destruction to property and loss of life. Tanker fire of 2011 showed us our vulnerabilities, but most memorably, it showed us the dedication and resolve of our police and fire departments, our city departments, and our citizens.
The night team's full focus is on this train tanker fire that's burning right now in Lincoln. This tanker contains 29,000 gallons of propane, and it could explode. Our crews are covering this on the ground and in the air. On the right side of your screen, LiveCopter 3 HD, giving us exclusive pictures of the fire from overhead. KCRA 3's Rich Ibera is live at one of the evacuation centers where people are spending the night. Let's start with Gulston Dart, who is anchoring our coverage, live from the scene. And Gulston, we've seen that fire grow through the night.
It really has, Edie, and you can see right behind me here, the fire is still burning intensely tonight as the propane continues to come out of that failed tanker. It's been burning now for more than 11 hours. There is a state of emergency here in the city of Lincoln. There are mandatory blackouts. We'll have more on that coming up in a second. First of all, I gotta tell you, we're a few hundred yards west of where the fire is in the northern part of downtown, where it is relatively quiet tonight. Part of the city has emptied out. Tower of Orange continually shooting several stories into the air.
It does worry me that there are several other tankers that are filled with propane.
A propane tanker burning for nearly half a day now, forcing thousands of mandatory evacuations in Lincoln, though some aren't ready to leave.
They said, "You should evacuate," and I said, "Is it mandatory?" And they said, "Yeah." And I said, "Do we need to leave?" And he said, "No." I said, "Alright, I'll stay."
Just afternoon time, calls went out about the explosion, a one-mile danger zone set up, people grabbing what they could, including their pets.
Grabbed a bunch of pictures and clothes and our puppy, and we came here.
As day turned to night, voluntary evacuations became mandatory. The city declaring a state of emergency. Fire crews can now only put water on the tanker until the 29,000 gallons of propane burn off. CalFire saying if the tanker gets too hot, it could explode, and worse.
If it did explode, there are tanks around this one that are full of petroleum. Those tanks would explode as well.
So as you can hear there, there is still very much the potential for a catastrophic event because of this fire still coming out of the tanker. I talked to a firefighter just a few minutes ago, who told me that there is a fire crew from Houston, specialists with fires like this, that are due in to the airport within the hour, he says. They'll be using a procedure that I believe is called a "hot tap." That's how they'll actually work to get this fire under control.
This incident happened August 23rd, 2011, at about 11:34 a.m., and it was at the AmeriGas Heritage Propane Facility at 989th Street, at the curve right there on 9th and H. The report was, it was a rail tank car carrying over 29,000 gallons of liquid propane, and the ignition occurred during the sampling process for unloading. This is just an article out of the Orange County Register, and the fire burned for almost two full days. And as we worked on solutions, we realized the gravity of our situation, and the severity was evidenced and reinforced by this article here. 1973, Kingman, Arizona, a reading from the article here, it killed 11 firefighters and a gas company worker when a rail car carrying propane tank exploded, resulting fireball injured more than 100 others and showered the surrounding area with shrapnel. The propane tanker flew a quarter of a mile, and its impact dug a crater 10 feet deep. Yes, that was 1973, but the fact of the matter is, there's still tanks, same volume, propane hasn't changed. That's what we were looking at. Some other images of the scene. One thing of note, I'm sure you're all aware, running along the rail lines is a major petroleum pipeline, which is very close to this. So 10-foot crater in the ground, who knows what that would have done to that petroleum pipeline.
And don't forget Ramos Oil across the way.
Ramos Oil with some very large tanks. The response to the incident, Lincoln Police and Fire Department, we received the initial call, and we immediately called back all personnel once we realized what we had. So everyone available that would answer the phone came to work. The incident required assistance from 26 other fire agencies under the California Fire Assistance Agreement. The onsite assistance from the State Office, the OES, as well as Plaster County OES arrived. Local county and state law enforcement agencies were involved, and there's an effect on city governance and city council. There is an emergency meeting and declaration and continuance of government as a result. Things that were affected, so there's key infrastructure that was affected, you had City Hall and the Police Department. We were within the one-mile evacuation area, and both buildings were forced to close and evacuate. We were required to evacuate the Lincoln Police Department Dispatch Center, and they immediately relocated the Rockland Police Department to continue dispatch services. And there was obviously another, heavy demand on other city departments and resources. And in total, there's more than 41 other state, county, and local agencies that participated in managing this incident. The effect on the city of Lincoln, so there was the one-mile radius, that one-mile radius was the, "Anything in here is probably going to be destroyed or die." There are three evacuation centers opened, residents and businesses were displaced for at least 43 hours. One of the major things, schools decided to close and not open on the first day, first couple days of school. And roads and utilities were interrupted, 65 Union Pacific, and underground pipelines were stopped, and much of the downtown area was without power. And this is just a map showing the modeling of the middle pinkish circle there is the one mile. So as you can see, that is all of old city of Lincoln, all the downtown and the east side and west side, and pretty much out to the creek, all the way up to Joyner Parkway is within that one mile. U.S. Department of Transportation, their summary, and I'll just summarize this, "Approximately 11:30 in August 23rd, 2011, tank car loaded with over 29,000 gallons of propane is in the process of having a sample taken prior to unloading at the Heritage Propane Northern Energy Facility located at 899th Street in Lincoln. During the process, tank car caught fire, resulting in burns to the employee. In order to protect public, an evacuation was ordered, and Highway 65 is closed until the fire was extinguished, more than 43 hours later. UP's traffic was affected and shut down. The main track of the Valley subdivision next to the facility was shut down due to the incident. Passenger trains were affected, and the fire occurred at a shipping facility, didn't occur on river property. It was a non-transport-related incident. The tanker was not hooked up, it was sitting in the yard." And the cause, there are two possible scenarios that would cause ignition of propane. One involves propane drifting to the ground and finding an ignition source. The other involves static electric discharge as a source of ignition. So the aftermath, over the course of the 43 hours it took to control it, it lost as many levels, city of Lincoln amassed about $500,000 in expenses, not to mention all the expenses the other agencies incurred. Residents and businesses had claims, and the parent company Heritage Propane initially dismissed the claims, but they eventually decided to pay some of those. And following the incident, we learned from this, the city of Lincoln did not renew the conditional use permit for the site, and the business was forced to relocate. And the Lincoln Police Department, we developed a redundancy in CAD, our phones and radios to allow remote dispatching from Rockland PD. So at this point right now, we can absolutely shut down and walk over there and dispatch. Just how close do we come to a very different outcome? As you've probably heard the term "blevy," it's a boiling liquid evaporating vapor, expanding vapor explosion. It's caused by a rupture of a vessel containing pressurized liquid that reached temperatures above its boiling point. So with the fire and the heat, liquid expands, it's going to cause pressure in there. So the concern was that vessel was going to rupture, you're going to have aerosolized or vaporized propane in the air, which is just going to result, it's a, like I said, 29,000-gallon bomb going off. The cooling of tank was critical in preventing that blevy, and the modeling required a minimum one-mile evacuation with death and destruction likely within it. And the initial actions of the fire personnel significantly contributed to the favorable outcome of this disaster. So this tank car sat in this condition, rusted and dry, for quite some time in the lot until it was finally removed. The fenced-off site is still there today, and it remains a reminder of how quickly the city can be turned upside down. We were lucky that day. The efforts of the firefighters, immediately putting water on the tank to cool it down, and then remain within 100 feet of the fire for the duration of the event speaks volumes to their courage and quick thinking during the incident. The efforts of law enforcement, working evacuations and security, some working over 18 hours straight, taking a four-hour break, then coming back to work, speaks of their dedication to service before self. We weren't going to let our town burn that day. As public safety, we were going to give it everything we had to ensure our town stayed intact, and I said "we," I was there. And that's how we felt 10 years ago, and that's how we feel today. This town and its people mean something to us, to the public safety of the city. And we willingly will put ourselves in the middle of these situations so others don't have to. It's our calling. And looking back, I'm proud of the work the Lincoln Police and Fire Department did during this incident. We didn't give up. We stayed right in the middle of it till the very end, till those flames died down through that hatch. And that's who we are, and that's what we do. And should something like this happen again, the men and women you see running towards it, that will be us. And I appreciate you giving me the time to speak this evening and recap this major incident 10 years ago, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief, for that presentation, and for all of your efforts to save us. Did any of my colleagues want to say anything?
Don't mind. Matt was very professional in his presentation. I don't have to be. There is no other word to use for the men and women of our public safety department that day than heroes. Those firefighters in particular, first on scene, with Kingman top of mind, knowing there was a very good probability, not likelihood, probability, they were going to die, ran towards that tanker. And they got water on that tanker to cool it down, to try to buy time for others to do their jobs and get people out. It's not a day I will ever forget. It's not a day that Lincoln should ever forget, and we are forever grateful for what all of the men and women, not only of our department, did that day, but the many, many other agencies that came to our aid swiftly, without question, and helped us through three unforgettable days, and allowed us to survive that, to learn from that, and to continue to build a wonderful community. So thank you to you, thank you to everyone involved.
It's hard to follow that, some of us did it all.
There's no other words.
Stand, if you want to say something.
Yeah, the most... I know, there's a slide in there that's really interesting. 41 agencies were managing it, and it worked. That is unbelievable. 41 agencies managing the same thing. So I do want to add on to that, if I may. It was my first term as mayor, and we had not been through something like that, except for in training. And two years prior, most of those agencies had trained on just exactly this type of incident, and so they had the book ready to go, which is, I think, why it ran so swiftly and so smoothly. Everybody knew their job. And then when a shift change came, it's the little things you notice. Entirely new team came in. Everybody that had been there was exhausted. Hard hats that had been marked with tasks and vests marked with the same task handed off to the next guy, so that everybody, whether they knew the players or not, knew who was responsible for what immediately. No conversation needed to be had, they knew. So really impressive. We do have a lot of books and training of just that type. We probably need to do a little more, but to know that all of those agencies plan for, train for, and cooperate together in an incident like that, the only one we've missed, and I didn't find out about this until after the fact, the men and women at Beal Air Force Base stood ready to take in 4,000 of our residents, house them, feed them, but more than that, to assist with the fire. But we didn't know, it wasn't in the book, they have to be asked. So General McGillicuddy at the time said very candidly to me, "I can't order my firefighters to go to your community and fight a fire, but I can order them to go close to it, and then they're going to do what firefighters do." So we just need to remember that Beal is there for us in the event that we need them, but we must ask. That's what frees them up.
Well, I had just come home from the hospital with a two-day-old, and it was terrifying. Thank you very much for everything you guys did that day.
I think one of the favorite things I say is that, in any catastrophe, any crisis, that nobody comes together like Lincoln. And that's why I love this place so much.
Thank you, Chief. Everyone good? Thank you again for the presentation.
That was amazing.
And everything that you do. Alright.
Tenure.
Doing a lot of feedback. Alright, let's move on to public comment. Ms. Gyllenhaal, do we have any?
So we did not receive anything prior to the meeting. I don't see any hands raised on Zoom, but we do...
We have one.
Yes, I have her card I was getting to. Susan Martina would like to speak. Please come to the podium.
Hi, thank you, thank you to the officer. That was pretty amazing. Actually, today, I just want to start with, I have a copy of all your oaths of office, and I wanted to read them. And it starts off, there's basically only two lines here, it says, "I," and then it inserts your name, "do solemnly swear or affirm that I support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic." I think this should be recited along the pledge with every meeting. The reason I say that is because I've been going around our city for the last 18 months, coming across these signs, mask mandates, vaccine mandates, and then only to learn that it's coming from here. The city of Lincoln is sending these to these organizations, my library, City Hall, the Fire Department, my community, all these places. I want to read something else, and I have to apologize ahead of time because I'm angry, I'm very angry. I don't want to be here tonight, but I will. I have inalienable rights. Let me say that again, inalienable rights, okay? Personal rights held by an individual which are not bestowed by law, custom, or belief, and which cannot be taken away or given away or transferred to another person, those are referred to as my inalienable rights, my birth rights, okay? So our oath that you're defending, the California Constitution says, Section 2, every person, oh, I'm sorry, Section 1, "All people are by nature free and independent and have inalienable rights. Among these are enjoying and defending life and liberty." That's our California Constitution that you're supporting by your oath. Now we have the Declaration of Independence, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, and all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." You are also, your oath of office is defending this, or supposed to be. The Bill of Rights, which is also part of our Constitution, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, my personal being, I have a right to be secure in. This mandate about these vaccines is illegal. You're right up there with the Nuremberg codes, as far as I'm concerned. The U.S. Constitution, the law of the land, Marbury versus Madison, the U.S. Constitution is the supreme law of the land, and any statute to be valid must be in agreement. You've got half of your citizens who do not agree with any of your mandates, whether that's masks or now these vaccines. Advocate, advocate in the law says to speak in favor of or defend by argument, to support, vindicate, or recommend publicly. Those signs that you're putting out all over my beautiful city, you're advocating it, you're supporting it. I hold you guys responsible for it. Should I read your oath again? Because you're not supporting the Constitution, you're going against it. We need someone like this officer over here, who's as diligent at fighting for my U.S. constitutional inalienable rights as this gentleman was about fighting that fire. I know my time is up. And one more thing, as far as I'm concerned, this, your whole agenda from this point on means absolutely nothing because it's moot. Because if you can't get that one thing right, your contract with the city is to defend my rights, and you're not doing it. And I will hold you accountable. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Ms. Gyllenhaal, do we have anyone else?
So I do not have any other cards, and I don't see any hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you. So we will move on to item 8, the consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or resident requests a specific item be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Any items removed will be considered after the remainder of the consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull an item? I can't see Dan, are you good?
Dan, you want to pull on?
No.
You're good. Alright, did we have any requested by the public?
We did not have any cards, but we do have a hand raised on Zoom. With the phone number ending in 7296, please go ahead. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, councilmembers. This is Mike Garabedian for Heal Lincoln. The idea, the item I'd like to take off of consent is the, I think it's 8N, it's the proposal to water Joyner Park with recycled municipal wastewater. 8N.
Thank you. No other hands are raised, Mayor.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I move the approval of the remainder of the consent.
One second.
Can I get a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
Councilmember Lauritsen.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriana.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Alright, let's go to 8N, Adopt Resolution 2021-164, and this would be, I believe, Thank you. A brief staff report.
Yes, yes. So the item before you is for authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Regional Water Authority, who will be overseeing this grant opportunity. It's part of the IRWM, Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, that we are a part of, and this project is part of that plan, and only those projects that are included in those plans are available for funding for this Prop 1 funding that's available. This project has been part of the master plan, reclamation plan, that the city has for getting recycled water out to different areas of the city, and Joyner Park being one of the higher user of water, potable water is up there along with, we already have reclaimed water at Foscat. Sorry, I'm diverging a little bit from the staff report, but that's the nuts and bolts of this and why we're before you today. I'd like, any questions?
Thank you. Why don't we maybe find out what Mr. Garabedian wanted to know?
Mr. Garabedian, please unmute yourself.
Thank you again, Mike Garabedian, a pleasure, I'm sorry, Lincoln, Heal Lincoln. The, it's really a bad idea to water school and park lawns, especially where we have babies and kids playing and various youth sports. The direct contact with the water is possible, and wind-blown sprinkler spray also. Wastewater, irrigated wastewater is not supposed to run off, but it puddles on several places on the cement parkways a long time. So we don't want people walking through that, or kids splashing in it. You've got soccer balls and dog sticks and baseballs, picnic blankets, frisbees. You know, we have the Counter Sewer Service Area Number 1, North Auburn, has been piped down here, and that has industries that are regulated because of categorical standards that apply to things like electroplaters and so forth. So this is something that we should be very concerned about. At the best, I would hope you would take it off consent and have a hearing on it to get the facts about what is in municipal wastewater, even after it's treated. So this is really a, something that needs a lot more consideration, and we should all be very concerned about putting our youth and others, and infirm who walk in this park and so forth, at risk. I think there have been cases of people infected in the school lawn situation, and we just don't want to create that possibility here. Thank you for this chance to raise the issue.
No other hands are raised, Mayor.
I don't know if staff wanted to respond to that concern at all about there being some, I don't know, health issue with the reclaimed water in the parks.
I can provide a brief response in that, we do have, the city does have a master reclamation permit that gives us the authority to treat and produce tertiary treated water that is Title 22 compliant. These regulations are approved through Department, State, Water Resource Control Board, Department of Health, it's all regulated, and it goes through stringent requirements that the wastewater treatment plant is required to uphold. We, the effluent is permitted through also the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Division of Drinking Water for parking landscape irrigation, and it's very highly regulated.
Thank you, that's perfect. I think that sometimes people don't realize just how regulated California is, and I feel like almost nothing is more regulated than water in this state. So I appreciate the response, hopefully that helps if there was any concern. Do any of my colleagues have any comments, questions?
I think a comment, yeah. Yeah, I toured that facility out there, and the water that comes out of it is actually better, they told us the water is better than the water that they release into Auburn Ravine, so, you know, it's perfect. And they do this all over the world, they use reclaimed water for watering, so I don't understand the problem.
And I think that is the point, is that water is so very clean that there are times, if I understand correctly, we actually have to add minerals and other elements back into it before we release it into Auburn Ravine, and it flows downstream, and ultimately into the Sacramento River and off to the sea. I think it was important, you did touch on it, we're already using reclaimed in Foscat, and I believe some of the irrigation of...
Landscape medians, correct.
And such. So you are correct, it is heavily regulated, and this water is probably much cleaner and safer than, let's say, well water.
Yeah, exactly.
Daniel, if I could get one second.
This is a permit that we got a grant against. The permit has been in place since about 2006, 2007, if I'm not mistaken, I might be off a year or two. The water, you really ought to, anybody who's interested in understanding, interested in understanding, the tertiary treated wastewater needs to go to the water treatment facility, get the tour, go through the lab, and see the testing that's done. There are a lot of areas in Lincoln that are irrigated, for instance, the golf courses at Lincoln Hills, Lincoln Hills Landscaping with raw water from NID. Raw water is untreated water, and it's a lot dirtier, carrying a lot more chemicals than this water that we have, that we call...
Oh, ditch water.
Retightened, right. It's got all the chemicals from the farms and everything.
Certainly, I understand the concern, though.
Certainly, I understand the concern, though. If you don't know what's going on with water and you hear your parks where your kids are playing soccer or your toddler's, you know, putting his fingers in his mouth is like wastewater. That doesn't sound very nice. So I appreciate the walking it through, because that's not what it is. Do I have a motion?
Probably the item.
Second.
Yes, Councilmember Joiner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
All right, we will move along to public hearings. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we'll go on to item 10, general business with 10A. Well, one, discuss providing direction to staff regarding for whom to cast the city's votes in the South Center Water District election of directors. And two, adopt Resolution 2021-168, declaring the city manager as the legal representative of the landowner of record in SSWD and authorizing the city manager to sign any election materials. And Ms. Scanlon will be giving the staff report.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and council members. In 2008, the city purchased two parcels totaling 323.5 acres from Sundance Lakeview Properties to create a stormwater retention facility. As the landowner of these two parcels, the city has 324 votes to cast for the four director positions currently open on the district board. Prior to 2019, the district had not conducted an election in 24 years due to incumbents filling open seats. There are two incumbents running, Thomas A. Kuquet, and I apologize if I mispronounced that name. He is a 20-plus-year board member. And Jason Dunbar, who is a four-year board member. Ashley de Valentine McKenzie is an appointed incumbent to fill the board vacancy, along with four other candidates, Tristan Nelson, William Henry Gilbert, Albert Frutell III, and Robert Van Dyke. Two candidate statements were included in the campaign materials. Tristan, William Henry, Tom Kuquet, Ashley, and William Henry Gilbert. I'm sorry, I listed his name twice. They did provide information for the councils, which was included in the packet. Jason Dunbar, Mr. Frutell, and Mr. Van Dyke did not provide any information. And that concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We'll bring it back up here. Do any of my colleagues have opinions, questions, comments?
I wish-
Let's start with, yeah, let's go through the-
So I read through it, and I'm just trying to understand, are they all up? And so we can vote for, or there's certain, there's four, right? There's four seats? Okay, that's why I want to-
Up to four.
Up to four, okay.
Do we have to vote for four? No, we don't have to vote for all, but we can up to.
We can throw all of our votes behind one candidate or divide them however we wish among four.
Okay, okay.
I wasn't sure on that, so thank you. All right. Councilmember Joiner, did you-
Well, this is a little tough one, because we might know them around the fringe, but we really don't know these folks. So to some degree, we're heavily reliant upon the materials we're given. I've, I reached out to some of our friends in the water industry to see what they know about folks. And from more than a few sources, two, two names rose to the top. So Tristan Nelson and Ashley McKenzie rose to the top. I will say that although we didn't get any materials from Mr. Van Dyke, his family is very, very well-known in the region, been here for generations, and very involved with South Center Water as well. So I am personally comfortable going with the two that I'm hearing strong recommendations for, and just dividing our vote between them. But if we want to go for more than that, I would recommend adding Mr. Van Dyke in to that mix.
Thank you. Are you finished?
Yeah.
Do you have anything, Dan? Do you want an opportunity? Do you have any?
I don't either, no. I defer to my colleagues on this one.
The only thing I was going to say is, I feel like if they were given an opportunity to submit information and chose not to submit information, I don't think that they deserve a vote. Either you're taking it seriously or you're not. You're wanting to inform people who can vote, or you're not.
Seems entitled to not, and not-
Yeah, so I am completely comfortable. I appreciate. I was going to ask, because I didn't get a response back, so I didn't have any extra context, or context, I was going to ask if anyone did. So I would be comfortable with that.
I actually liked William Gilbert's information, I thought.
Just from his bio.
Mm-hmm. But I mean, I appreciate your input. But I, like I said, I don't, I don't know who these people are. But, but I agree with you. I think it's, to not offer information when people are voting on you, that we don't really know them.
It's an opportunity.
It is, right, so.
Does anyone disagree with that? Like that we at least narrow it down to the field, the scope of those who have submitted information, at least for our consideration? Seems scary to those who tried, in my opinion. Dan, are you good with that? All right, so of those, does anyone have an objection of splitting it between the two that Paul? Are you mentioning to add a third, or are you finding-
I like William Gilbert. He submitted information, and I really liked what his bio was, his information.
What we can do up to four, does anyone have an issue with splitting it between those three?
And Mayor, I'd just remind you, we do need to open it to public comment at some point.
I don't have a problem with that. Are you okay with that?
We don't have to make a decision. We want to put it towards the field of how we feel. Do you want to open public comment and come back?
Yeah, I think I do.
Do you want it? Let's do that. All right, so let's open for public comment. Do we have any?
So I don't have any hands raised on Zoom. Does anybody wish to speak? I don't see any hands raised. I didn't receive a- That's not very helpful, thank you.
Give him a few seconds. We'll bring it back.
So I could do this, he's probably not going to like it. But Albert, you probably know a few of these folks, or at least their families. Any, any thoughts you want to share with us? So the list-
I'm on the spot, Paul.
The list is, it is putting him on the spot, I know that. The list is Tristan Nelson, Ashley McKenzie, Thomas Kuquet, William Gilbert, Jason Dunbar, Albert Frutell, and Robert Van Dyke.
Well, no, but only those who submitted information? Because we're, if we're only considering those who submit information, given the-
No, the two that-
Van Dyke didn't, I thought.
No, the ones that you said didn't submit, did you? Did they? Oh, they did, okay.
I thought you just said one that didn't, and the last one, the Van Dyke one, did not submit.
Van Dyke did not submit.
Yeah, Van Dyke did not.
That's what I'm saying, so I would ask Albert if he has an opinion on any of those ones that did.
I was throwing it out to the public in its entirety, if they have an opinion.
We just did that. Thank you, Albert, for-
Albert Schreiber, Moore Road. While I appreciate the, the offer and the chance to put input, this is the one thing I'm not up on. So I really don't want to suggest someone, something that I don't know what they're doing, so.
Appreciate that.
Anyway, thank you.
All right, thanks, Albert.
So I would propose that we go with the two that got feedback from those in water. But also, if you want to counter, I'm not opposed to.
So remind me, do we have an even number of votes? It's 300 and what?
324.
324.
So we have an even number. I'm comfortable with the two. One concern I had with the gentleman you were talking about, he indicated that he is often off working, if I'm remembering correctly, in Africa on projects there for over 18 years, I believe, if my memory serves. So that was one of my concerns there.
My colleagues to my left over here. How do you feel? Would you like to do the two that got feedback? Or would you like to expand it to the three, since we have up to four?
We'll go with the consensus, really. I don't-
How helpful, Dan.
I have a problem.
No, how about you?
I'll do the same thing. No, I mean, so it's two and two, so we could do two votes for each. It's cumulative.
160.
We have four votes.
So we can, we can do up to four, or we can just split it evenly?
We have 300.
We have 324 votes.
One vote per acre.
One vote per acre, okay. I'll go with the other.
And we can split it however we like.
Okay, I'll do that then.
Do what then? The two.
You're leaving it up to us.
I prefer the two.
Let me float a motion and see where it takes us. Is that all right? I'll make a motion that we split our votes evenly between Tristan Nelson and Ashley McKenzie.
Would you like to make a counter motion?
We do need a second on that motion.
Do we do the second before we do the counter? Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
We do all second the motion, and then we do the counter if we're going to entertain one, correct? Right, are you wanting to entertain one, or are you good?
You know what, I, I'll just defer to Paul's recommendation. It's not a hill that I'm going to die on, I don't- I like the guy, I thought he, he had a good background, I thought he would do well, but, you know. But that's fine, if you want to throw all our votes between, behind those two, I'm fine with that.
I feel more comfortable having had context on it.
Sure, sure. Yeah.
Do we know what the total number of available votes are that will get people elected?
I don't have it with me, but we were-
I suspect ours are very miniscule.
Yeah.
They are.
We're all, it's probably a very cool word.
Which is why I tend to think of concentrating our, our influence.
So we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Should we take a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Joiner.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skent.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
You good? All right. All right, moving along to 10B. Discuss the city's stance on the proposed Cal Cities resolutions and adopt Resolution 2021-169, designating the City of Lincoln's voting delegate and alternates to the League of California Cities Annual Conference and determine the city's stance on the two proposed Cal Cities resolutions. This is Ms. Scanlon also.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Silhaj and council members. The League of California Cities, now called Cal Cities, not League, not L-O-C-C, Annual Conference is scheduled for September 22 through 24 and will be held at the Sacramento Convention Center. In order to vote at the annual business meeting, the City Council must designate a voting delegate and may appoint up to two alternate voting delegates. We have registered for the conference all council members, but Councilmember Joiner. City Council will need to discuss and nominate delegates and discuss the two proposed resolutions and direct the delegates on the city's position. The first resolution is related to online sales tax equity and represents a shift away from tax revenue concentrated in cities that host fulfillment centers toward destination allocation. Cal Cities would need to analyze online sales tax data to identify a fair and equitable distribution formula. And the resolution is supported by both Northern and Southern California cities. The second resolution is related to funding for the CPUC, the California Public Utilities Commission, to inspect railroad lines to remove illegal dumping graffiti and homeless camps. And is primarily supported by Southern California cities. This concludes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. We will bring it back up for discussion and maybe just go through one by one, starting with Councilmember Andriata.
Partner Mayor, are we going to discuss how, as a council, we want to vote on the two resolutions before picking the-
That's fine. We, or just say how you feel about both on your turn. Want to do that?
Okay.
Just do that. Go through. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
All right. Let's start with Councilmember Andriata. If you have an opinion on who should be the delegate, and if you have an opinion on how we should guide them.
Okay, so I don't know. What I remember from before was that when Dan was mayor, he was the one who voted. If you're attending, I think as mayor, you should vote. And if you're not able to, then I should vote, but, but, you know. I mean, it just seems like that would be consistent with what we've done before.
On the actual, we'll get to you.
Just historically, though.
We'll get to you, you gotta let her have her turn.
No, it's fine.
Do you have an opinion on how you'd like us to, or do you want to table that for now?
What, the, the-
The actual proposals.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about, get more information about that.
Separately?
Yeah, that's fine.
So typically, and I just want to put everything in context. It was not unusual for us to assign someone who was willing to stay late. Potentially, potentially, potentially even an additional night, because some of those votes can get to where you're going to miss your flight.
We could do rock, paper, scissors?
No, who was a willing volunteer? I did it for a number of years, but yeah. So, so if you want to do it, mayor, vice mayor, I have no issue with that. But Mark is correct in his assessment. There have been a few times where it has gone long and drawn out.
Are all five of us registered?
No. So I'll be out of, I'll be out of state, so otherwise I'd be there.
What I was going to say is-
You're next anyway, so why don't you take it first?
So with respect to the two items, I'm fine with supporting both of those. I'd love for whoever goes to see if we can sneak in graffiti cleanup and weed abatement in on the railroad track item. We've got a long stretch of track through town that's always ragged with weeds.
I can tell you the weed abatement part is very political. It would be a difficult one to slip in. We could try.
Make sure it's very late in the evening when they just want out.
Wait until like a 10 o'clock hour. Are you, are you done? So Dan, you can go, all right.
Okay. Mayor, as the primary voter, Vice Mayor. And then Bill, if he wants it, I don't. Then they're done that. No, you know, and-
Just hold up the card, that's all you have.
Yeah.
I tried to get out of it last time, he tried to make me do it.
And, well, we got out a reasonable time last time, but, you know, they can really get dragged out. But-
Well done framing that, though, Dan.
Yeah. It's interesting the first couple of times. As far as the resolutions go, I'm adamantly in favor of one.
Okay.
Because, you know, we've been trying to work with Kevin anyway. And the second one, it'll happen, and it's a good thing. And if you could put the amendment in, you know, I think the policy committee, that policy committee would probably accept an amendment, it's harmless.
I'll go along, I'll go along with that as far as, you know, you being-
Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, yeah, I'll go along with that. And also, the resolutions, I mean, I think we do need to change the sales tax distribution. It should be, it should be by zip code, not, then again, our zip code goes outside the city.
So I'm hearing mayor, Vice Mayor.
And, and Bill.
And Bill as the-
Two alternates, which is-
Yeah, so mayor, Vice Mayor, then Bill. Sounds like anyone but me, for the love of all things. And then on the resolutions, Holly wanted more information.
I just want more information on number two.
Which part? All of it?
Yeah, yeah.
So what, what, you've been through this. What, what happens is, you get there, they give you a packet that is guaranteed to change as you move through the process. And so those couple of days there, that will continue to evolve. And that's a really good time to get to committee and see if you can't slide that new language in long before it goes to the floor. See if you can't get that-
So with that, because I haven't done that before, when would you suggest approaching that conversation?
Second day. You get the packet.
I suggest you talk to Charles Anderson, a rep, and ask him to walk you through how to do it.
There you go. Yeah, it's not complicated.
All right, so I'm hearing that we have consensus on mayor, Vice Mayor, supporting both resolutions. And if possible, try to sneak in a graffiti and weed abatement into the covered items on item two.
I don't know that I'd use the word sneak, but yes.
Try to foster an amendment.
Thank you.
Is that more preferable? All right, can I get a motion for that? Do we need to, do we, how do we need to state it?
Do we want to-
This is, we need to-
Oh yeah, we need public comment. I don't know where my head is, I'm sorry. Can we open it up for public comment?
So I don't have any hands raised on Zoom. I don't see anybody in the audience, and we didn't get any cards, so.
Thank you for the reminder, Christine. We'll bring it back. So I, do, we do need to clarify, right, that it is a recommendation of how we vote? Because it's possible that this goes sideways in some way. And if whoever's there has a gut, a gut of like, that's a no.
Always, they need that.
We should have the leeway to be like, sorry, guys, it changed in a bad, bad way, and we're not going to support it. So how do we state that?
So I would suggest that it is the council's desire to appoint Mayor Silhaj as their primary voting delegate, with Holly Andriata as the first alternate and William Lawrenceon as the second alternate. and that the council as a whole recommends adoption of both amendments or both resolutions with the friendly amendment to add graffiti and weed abatement to the second resolution.
And does that give us a flexibility to completely change the support for it if the language changes? So is it maybe as written, the recommendation as?
It's, it's the recommendation of the council to the voting delegate as stated currently.
Do we need to restate that, or can we just get a?
It's a recommendation, not, not.
Not direction.
Direction.
Yeah, yeah. Can we just use that as our motion and?
I'm fine if someone wants to say that.
So moved.
Second.
All right, can I get a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlsken.
Yes.
Councilmember Lauritsen.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Yes. Thank you for helping us trip along that, Christine. All right, moving along, we are on 10D. Receive COVID-19 report, provide an update on the status, did I skip?
10C.
Sorry, did I?
Oh, here it is. All right, 10C, adopt Resolution 2021-170, authorizing the approval of a personal request in the Solid Waste Division of the Public Works Department to add the positions of two full-time refused truck drivers, one seasonal refused truck driver, one full-time office assistant two to the fiscal year 2021-22 budget, approve a title reclassification from an office assistant, assistant one to an office assistant two, and authorize a budget augmentation of $249,965 from the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund 730 and $24,020 from the Water Enterprise Fund to support the expense for these new positions. And Jim Vermees, are you doing this one tonight for us?
Yeah, I'm actually doing this one today.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. First off, this particular item is a little bit of a budget catch-up. As I mentioned in staff report, there was discussions ongoing as we were rolling through the budget in the early months of February, March, where we needed to add additional personnel and staff work and full-time employees. Then things kind of enhanced with the warp speed with the leaving of the city manager at that time. So things kind of got moving pretty, pretty, pretty quickly. And these particular positions, you know, kind of missed that approval and authorization with the council at that time. So I'm bringing them back to get them authorized, which is, as you mentioned, the three, there are three positions in solid waste and then the office position, which is a halftime position. And essentially, what has occurred through the, the following months in my tenure there with the Public Works is I'm kind of seeing it, you know, a little bit differently on the way that the setup has been and what we really truly need based on a few months back. And so, to the point is, what we definitely need to do is we definitely need to add the positions for the solid waste. But in doing so, we also need to counteract what we're seeing as a critical kind of demand on admin work and phone calls and just work orders that are coming in on the admin office side. So we did have a halftime, a, a person working part-time. And so what we'd like to do is take a carve-out of what the three positions were essentially were, take a half and put that into the office assistant and then up that office assistant to an office assistant two to make it more in line with a salary that's at least larger than a McDonald's, okay? Is what we're working with on the salary, so we thought it would be definitely appropriate as well as the work that is committed by this particular person to the city. And we thought that that would be a, I think, a thing that would show her that we are committed to her long-term longevity with the city, so that's that part. And so that, what that would do then would take it to the two positions and a, a part-time position for the solid waste. As I mentioned in the report, solid waste is getting pretty busy. We do have to navigate through time off with people getting sick as well as leave time. We also have a rise in demand with new housing that is coming in and trying to be responsive and provide that customer service. We're definitely see a calling for the additional positions. Furthermore, we're having to comply with what is coming down the pike here in the beginning of the year is S B 1383, which is the organics program. And we're navigating through that, you know, internally of what that really means for the city, which is ultimately gonna be some possible changes. But making it even worse is the fact that we're working with the materials recycling facility and their selection process of an operator currently. So you got a perfect storm where we're really trying to manage a varying kind of dilemma of cost as well as staffing. And so, right now, I think we're okay going to the two positions with a halftime position, a part-time position, to get us kind of to that level to have a decent amount of service and not see a drop-off. But as we progress, once we know who the operator is and once we get a value and a cost, then I think, you know, the, the board out there will make some adjustments on maybe possibly rates and tipping fees, which they already did recently, but there's probably more to come, which then dovetails into a, a rate study that we need to complete. And I think logically, it makes sense not to embark on a rate study and then have these other variables out there at the MRF have to be plugged in after the fact that we adopted rate study. So with that perfect storm of all these variables, I think right now, we do show a surplus in our reserve for this particular, these, all these positions. So we're comfortable with that. But also, I think the moral of also what we need to do is have to really take a hard look at the rate study and get that adopted when it's that time. Because to rely on development to keep, you know, plugging in the salaries and, you know, for these costs is something that I think is in the long-term not sustainable. So we need to kind of get going on the rate study, but with that, there's other elements and variables that are playing into why we can't move forward on that at this time. So with that said, we do have the budget money, we do have the reserve, and I would recommend that we approve these particular positions as you stated in the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that thorough review. And we'll bring it to my colleagues for maybe questions, comments, and we'll open it up to the public.
I don't have any questions at the moment.
No questions.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions. Or questions slash comments. The need for the two drivers, three, two and a half drivers, is not driven by 1383. There's no impact essentially from 1383, correct?
Currently correct, based on what we are hearing from the, the authority, correct. We're, we're hopeful of that, correct?
The, I thought that N B S, that the studies, the rate studies doing, being done were in parallel for solid waste and water. Or was it solid waste and wastewater? Or was it all three?
My response to that was that was a task that was handled by the previous city manager, so I was not engaged on how they were aligning with each other. And I don't have the answer to that question of how that, we can get that answer, though.
I guess my question was, delaying this, which is reasonable since we don't know what the costs are gonna be out of the waste management agency, is it also affecting another utility that should be getting a rate study out?
Is, I'm trying to follow, is.
Stopping this study.
If we delayed.
Oh.
Right.
Would, would it have like a domino? Well, that's basically what you're asking, right? If we delayed this, would it have a domino impact on the other utilities?
No, not, no.
Okay.
And then the, the 24K from Water Enterprise for the admin person, have we assumed that there's the equivalent of 24K out of the big money from solid waste? Have we always had a part-time admin person? This is an addition from going, from a part-time person to a full-time person.
That is correct, we've had for several years a part-time person.
So the impact of future budgets is on the, on the order of like 50K a year?
Correct.
Okay, not just this year, but in the future.
Correct.
We've always budgeted, that was my point.
We've always budgeted for a part-time.
Okay, thank you. I have no more questions.
Thank you. Did you have any? I also don't have any, let's open it up to the public, do we have any comments?
Mayor, I don't have any hands raised on Zoom. I don't see any hands raised in the audience and I don't have any cards.
All right, well, I'll bring it back up, I have no concerns with this proposal at all, do I have any, if I have a motion?
Move approval of the item.
Second.
Yes, Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Andriata.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlsken.
Yes.
Councilmember Lauritsen.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Yes. All right, this time we're actually on item 10B. The COVID-19 report, I'm reporting on the status of emergency in the City of Lincoln and Mr. Scott will be giving that for us.
Right, I, and thank you very much, I, I don't have a big update on this. I mean, we, we have gone from a year where we got new state or county regulations almost on a weekly or bi-weekly basis to a point where we're not getting a whole lot of input at all in terms of, of new regulations or, or any kind of clear guidance. Obviously, there's been some spiking on infections and what we all read is that it's variant-related that is causing the spiking. And there's obviously concerns as school starts that, that issues may, may come up related to the kids all working in a school environment. At City Hall, we're experiencing more infections than we've had. But more than that, we're experiencing people being exposed and needing to be, you know, removed from the workplace for quarantining and testing, and we continue to do that. I would guess, from what I've been told, that it's more active right now than it was literally during the, the peak during the last year. So it's a, it's a time of some concern. That has caused me to think about whether or not we want to enact a mask rule not just for those who are unvaccinated, but for all employees in indoor environments except maybe where they're working at their desk and are adequately isolated from other people that they don't really need to be masked all the time. We haven't done that yet, I haven't done that yet. It's something we think about, we have employees who wish I would and we have employees that wish I wouldn't. And, and at some point, that's a decision that, that we'll be talking about, whether it's appropriate to do. Obviously, there's a lot of agencies these days that are going a lot further than that and there's agencies that aren't. My guess is that we'll get guidelines from the state of California in a month. And, and I don't know what they are, but I suspect we're gonna get clarity as, as the next few weeks go by, but, but not right now. One question I have for the council, though, is we are a little inconsistent in our policy as it relates to public meetings right now. As you know, we proudly went back into public, we were happy to go back into public and have in-person meetings. And we're doing that with the city council meetings and with the planning commission meetings. We're offering both in-person and Zoom. We are not allowing that for our committees. We've asked our committees to go back to Zoom only. And in part, that's because they have to work with the staff and we're trying to minimize the, the impacts that that might cause. On the other hand, in the last couple of weeks, I've had several groups from the community asked to use city, the community meeting room at City Hall and we're letting them do that. And so there's an inconsistency in policy there. And I thought it would be worthwhile to ask the city council if you've got any input on, on that particular issue.
Do we want to handle that first, so we can ask other questions? Let's do that. Do we want to go in order, or do you want to just speak? You look like you have something to say, Paul, so why don't you just go?
I would argue that there isn't an inconsistency because public groups asking to use our facilities are not involving staff. And staff are the primary. Well, they are, then, then we need to discuss that. How, how are they using?
Just the, the meeting room setup, the ma, making sure that people are accommodated, getting them into the building. It's, it's not, you know, and some of the, some of the groups, staff people are asked to participate. We had the Downtown Lincoln Association and we had several city people involved in that. Whatever the governance.
Government governance.
Whatever that was today, I, I'm sure that I, I wasn't there. But I'm sure that there were people, staff involved in setting that up. I, I, I'm comfortable with what the council wants to direct, but there's an obvious inconsistency in some cases where we're telling the committees, no, they can't do in-person and we're telling other people they can.
Do any of, either of you have?
I had a question about, and it pertains, so I, I think I can ask this. The, the speaker who spoke first about mask mandates and vaccine mandates, as far as I know, we haven't done that, right? So, right, so I, I wanted to ask for the question, but I, you know, I'm always worried about being appropriate and when I can speak and when I can't speak, but signs going out over, over the city. Like, I get it, you know, the library staff wears masks or whatever, but I just wanted to be clear that we were not creating mandates for employees or people like vaccine mandates and that sort of thing, or are we?
Only to the extent that the state has mandated.
And the CDC.
Well, okay, so teachers and health and that kind of thing, but for like City Hall.
During all of last year, the state had a mandatory guidance of masks indoors. And so obviously, on all of our buildings, we would have had signage asking.
You gotta let the language, the mandatory guidance.
Yeah, it's some fun words.
Yes, no, we had that before, but that.
Those were what the pictures were.
The old ones, the old ones.
They were pictures of, even now, we say on the door, if you're not vaccinated, we strongly recommend wearing a mask.
Which is really interesting because a lot of vaccinated people are getting sick and, and whatever, so, but I get it. So I was, I was, just wanted clarification, were those old signs that were already on there? Are they the new, new ones that were put up? I'm just curious.
I have no idea.
It looked like they were the ones that are on our doors.
Okay.
But let's go back to the, to the incongruency between virtual and person.
By the way, this is a perfect example of the whole problem with communication and inconsistency. State is, county is inconsistent with the state, the state is inconsistent with the CDC. We're ambivalent. And this is something that we can control the consistency of, so that we really ought to do that. That's my, you know, pulpit for the, for the day. I am, I have my feelings, which are grossly different than, than Holly's, okay? But it's inconsistent that both of us feel that we have the mind of the state or the government behind us in thinking the way that we do.
Oh, I don't think, I don't think. Do you have a, a bell top?
Yeah, I, my point is, you know, I heard what the speaker said about us mandating things. As far as I know, we're not the one mandating anything. It's, it's the state or the county, you know, we don't make a decision whether someone should wear a mask or not. So I would say, I think we should go along with whatever the, the guidance is.
Going back to when I brought up in council-initiated business, I am concerned, and I'm concerned, one, we, Kaiser right now has a higher admission than they've ever had in the entire life of COVID. Now, all of their ICU patients are unvaccinated, but still, those are members of our community. It is spreading and it's higher than it has been. And then, I don't know if any of you heard Christine whisper over there, but I worry about OSHA because all of these events do require our staff members, and I know this is Mr. Scott's job, but I think this is also a policy consideration because of how controversial it is. Every time we're requiring our staff to interface with large groups, we're potentially risking exposure and that's a legal liability for the city. I think it's something to think about. So I was thinking, all right, how do we do this reasonably, which I think we have all tried to do the entire time? I agree with Mr. Scott, I think in a month, we have marching orders one way or the other, once the recall has passed. But until that time, what if we stayed in person, but we reinstituted like physical distancing? Right, instead of having seats right next to each other and staff right next to each other? If we just reduce capacity of all of our rooms?
Again, consistent.
Well, that's what we did last time until we had this shit now.
There are now two physi, two physical distancing rules. One at the, there's a three-foot and a six-foot rule.
Three foot's mostly in schools, six foot was the standard before. If we're not going to require masks, what if we then go to a six-foot distance? I know that that would reduce a lot, the capacity in the room, but we do have the overflow room, which if we put that at the six foot, I don't think that with very few occasion we've ever had that many members of the public, but it wouldn't accommodate them. Doesn't solve your problem of some being public, some being not, I think we probably do need to address that. I personally think we probably should not be having our space available. If we're not going to give it a. If we're not going to give it available for our committees, and that's for good reason.
No small part of that was that the committees don't have Zoom capability. The committees, the smaller committees, the Economic Development Committee, that type of thing, does not have Zoom. From the meeting room, from a live meeting room, they don't have
Oh, right.
the ability to broadcast that. And so it's an all-in or all-out.
All-in or all-out, yeah, for our committee, correct.
So I'm probably, this is going frankly against.
The fiber of your being.
To a degree, to a large degree. Rather than try to navigate our way into social distancing and multiple rooms and Zoom meetings and live meetings. If we're going to start doing all of that, then why don't we just be as cautious as possible and go back to Zoom for a month or two?
Council, awesome.
I don't like it. Council and Planning Commission, I don't like it. I don't necessarily want it, but I also don't want to be the arbiters of consistency.
Another thing we could do along that, though, which is still consistent, not consistent with what we did, but we did what was most advised by the state before, is we could go full virtual for the public, and if we wanted to be for collaboration, it would let us be spread out.
It still brings staff into the room.
But they could sit out, away from us and away from each other.
Or you could go.
Large room.
You could go to full Zoom, where everybody is 18 inches from everybody.
Yeah. That's good.
I did have a question on the air purification. Did we ever get those, like, mobile filters to bring it up, like, with the HEPA capability? Because that is a huge, like, mitigation measure, and if we don't have that, I do think we probably should.
Last I heard, they were going to price it.
Okay, so we haven't. We don't have that in time for whatever's happening now.
Not for this week. I don't know how long it takes. You know, it's like everything else these days, we're probably on back order for ever, but we were going to price it and find it.
So I suspect we'll find out after the reelection, because the executive order that allows for remote governance expires September 30th. What if we went back virtual, all virtual, as whatever's happening right now just keeps spiking? Watch and wait, and see whatever is extended, see where we're at, and we can always come back.
That's what I was, it's going to be sometime in October before we know.
It'll be the last week of September.
There'll be a whole lot of things that happen.
There'll be a lot of them. I don't like, I don't love it. I also don't love the other options of it. And I think that, to your point, there are people who don't want it for these, you know, very firmly convicted, I would say philosophical, but they're much more rooted than that, and I think real than that. But then there's also the actual threat of physical safety, health, and OSHA laws and liability, which whether we like it or not, is a little bit of a noose around our neck. I'm hearing total silence. So how do we feel on it?
Well, how does OSHA affect council meetings? I know that it's a employers, you know, wearing masks.
You're an employee. I'm an employee. He's an employee. She's an employee. If one of us gets sick, it is an automatic assumption that that was contracted during your employee.
I know, I understand that.
Okay, so if you got sick and then you passed it along to your family members, your neighbor, somebody died, they wanted to sue, we could potentially be liable for your family, or whomever in your home, and you who got sick from it because of OSHA. So it's like a real thing.
And just to clarify, that's not necessarily an OSHA issue. That's more of a general liability issue. But the OSHA issues are related to if a certain number of employees are exposed to it in the workplace, there are fines and penalties that we can be subject to as an employer.
I guess I was just thinking, like, the workday within City Hall, not us as employees. That's what I was thinking.
So everyone here is, yeah.
So the example I've given in conversations with the mayor relate to if one of us contracts COVID, we go home, we give it to our children, our parents, our cousins, and grandma or grandpa passes away, there could be potential civil liability if they were to trace it, trace it back to the city.
Wanted to, and they tried.
If they wanted to pursue that.
It's on us to refute. It's not flipped. And then the fines are hefty for an outbreak.
I understand that.
With OSHA.
With OSHA, yeah.
Why don't we hear from the public? Why don't we hear from the public?
Has everyone spoken and want me to open up to the public, or are we?
Oh, yeah.
Let's open up to the public.
You remember them.
It's very quiet tonight.
Yeah.
Quiet tonight. It's hard to remember. Normally, I don't think I've ever had a meeting where there has not been public comment.
So I don't have any hands raised, Mayor. I don't see anybody in the audience, and I don't have any cards.
Bring it back up. Must be the full moon.
I'm not going to volunteer Albert anymore.
Learned your lesson. All right, so we need a resolution, but this isn't an action item. So how do we bring that back? Do we need to bring it back on an agenda?
We just give direction.
Can we give direction? Like, how are we allowed legally to proceed on this?
You can give staff direction on how you wish your meetings to proceed going forward.
We can on it. Okay, do we wish to do that?
Wish them to proceed?
That's overstating the item.
How you're directing us to proceed.
We have a desire to provide direction as a body tonight.
Well, let's put the items that we discussed. Number one, public meetings. Number two, committee, the disconnect there. Number three, in general, the increase in, really, it's the virility of the two variants. One of the options was to do social distancing. The other one was to go back to the way it was two months ago. And Zoom, for everything. And I think those are.
So I think there are a couple of different things here, though.
When, is there, if we decided that we did want to just revert back to all virtual, watch and wait, does that create any hiccup for you transitioning back, or we have it down now, and it's like, whatever we'd like to do, you're good? Yes. Okay, sorry, Paul, I didn't mean.
When we come back, we know how to do it.
Yeah. So we're good to go, whatever way. All right.
There's an element that we don't tend to think of, and that is if we're not going to allow our facilities to be used by groups, are we going to close the library? Because that's.
The library is now joint use. It can't be closed, because that is an entirely separate.
Inconsistent again.
But not, because it's a separate set of guidelines also. They're governed also by whatever the education guidelines are.
During that time.
Yeah, during the day of, so I guess you're saying out-of-school hours, do we keep it open to the public?
If we're talking about consistency.
Mr. Scott, do you have an opinion on that?
And then we wind up with the theater groups. We wind up with events being booked for the pavilion.
Outdoor events, I think we should continue to allow. Outdoor is a different environment from indoor.
This is getting into a territory that's beginning to make me pretty uncomfortable.
The outdoor. I'm not ready to start shutting everything down.
The city's facilities that we were, are allowing the public into, are we prepared to say we're not going to do that anymore for a while? The rehearsals that are taking place in the theater, the library, any events that might be at the pavilion or elsewhere?
We could just do reduced capacity. Take it down a notch. I don't think that's inconsistent.
I'm not willing to shut down those public things. If you want council to go back to Zoom and keep committee members on Zoom for a few weeks, I will capitulate to that. I don't like it. I'm strongly, like, I mean, I'm just, like, so frustrated with all of the inconsistencies coming from the governor, Cal OSHA, all of them. They all contradict each other, and it's ridiculous. And the mandates and all of that, it's ridiculous, but that's an argument for a different time. But as far as the other buildings and the community things that are going on, I'm not ready to shut that down. Like, they're doing their thing, and, you know, just because they're renting our building, they can minimize, and they can do what they want, and they can have their kids wear masks if they want to. I think we're treading back into territory that we don't want to go.
Do those activities require staff presence?
No.
For the most part, no.
They don't have to coexist.
The only exception's the library. The library, I wasn't here, but I would guess that during most of the last year, the library wasn't allowing public.
No, they weren't.
And so, and we recently let the public back in, but we haven't re-initiated programming. We're still not doing that.
It isn't online.
Pardon me?
It isn't online.
It isn't online.
Yeah, and some programming's not happening.
And, you know, I had said to the council that if you didn't want to vote, and you just wanted me to use the authority you've given me on this, I would probably revert back to where we were when we were in a Zoom world for a couple of months until we figured this out. I do not think we ought to be doing anything with the theater and those kind of facilities. I would have to consult with the recreation center to see what that does to them, and I would need to consult with the library to see what it does with them. But that would be the most that I would do at this point. And if you.
Those facilities also are quite large, for the most part. They have a lot of space. That completely changes your risk factors.
That's why I would consult with them.
It's not the same as this.
I don't think the council needs to get into doing space planning, but I think I think we could go that direction. If you want to just punt to me and let me do that, I would probably go that route. And we would just stop renting out the facilities. We don't rent it out. We allow people to come in and use. We would probably stop that for a couple of months.
At City Hall, you're saying?
At City Hall.
You're not talking to larger facilities in general, where, for the most part, those are public who have opted in to be in there. It's not staff who's forced to rent around.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the City Hall.
That's kind of really the distinction.
And there is no way to get it perfectly consistent. There's no way to get there.
A lot we're playing with.
But I'd give us, you know, we did this for a year and a half. We could do it for a couple more months if we needed to, without creating a big impact on anybody. And it's going to go one way or the other, I suspect. We're either going to know clearly that we have a challenge, that we've got to do something about, or we're not. And that's where I'd go for right.
I feel like our option is either we require masks regardless of vaccination status, and we distance, or we go virtual. I don't like either, but I like the first one less. I think that causes a lot more sore points.
It does.
And like, creates more restrictions on people who really don't want them versus just going virtual, where no one is disrupting their daily flow, and that, like, very firmly-held convictions on both sides aren't triggered as much, aside from your lack of access to your public building, which feels wrong. And I will acknowledge it feels wrong, because it feels wrong to me, I guess.
So it gets even more complex September 25th. Lincoln showcase.
It's outdoors.
It's outdoors, but it's tightly packed.
Outdoors has a whole different set of risk factors.
We just had, we just had the Roger Relic show last weekend, and there was a lot of people, and everyone, I mean, like, that's.
I'm not going one way or the other. I'm saying we need to take all of this.
Outdoor things like that. People make their own choices.
There is.
One at a time.
There is consistent guidance for outdoor events. And for gatherings.
Say consistent guidance. There is guidance for outdoors events.
Yeah, but we could be consistent.
Consistently.
No, there is guidance for events. That outdoor events, which are different guidance than indoor events. I can't remember the number, whether it was 250 or 1,000 people. I hope it was 1,000, but in the indoor event, after a band.
It's 1,000, yeah.
It's 1,000.
To have proof of vaccine.
Proof of vaccine.
I think Mark brought us to a place, tried to corral us back and get us to a place where, I think.
Let him do his job. I think let him do his job, and I think we determine how we'd like our policy committees to be held and our own meetings to be held. I feel like we have the two options, and I don't like the mandatory mask one. So I would prefer that we just maybe go back virtual and just hang on tight for a couple of weeks. That's like one meeting, really, until we're going to have something that comes out from the state that tells us what we're doing. So maybe just go back for the one meeting, slow our roll a little bit, take some time, and see what happens.
Yeah, we're not going to affect very many meetings in that time.
I think it's one. I mean, the recall's the 15th, and it expires the 30th, well, 4th. The 15th is when we'll know.
Yes, yes.
The 30th is when the executive order expires. They will have to reissue something or not by that date, so it's one meeting. Maybe we just go back. That would be my recommendation, and we just see what happens, and we reduce all the anxiety for our staff in, like, the current, and Kaiser is, they're packed. They reported out this morning. It's the highest they've ever been. It is.
So are those all county residents, or are they still bringing them in from outside?
I think they're still bringing some in. But either way, it's still our capacity of our local healthcare.
Which can be grown, but yes.
Yes, but, you know, so.
So why don't you let me just do it?
Okay, and then we direct that we go virtual, and then we just see what happens before the 30th. Is everyone okay with that? Okay is maybe overstated. Can we concede to that for now? Begrudgingly.
Begrudgingly. No, that's fine. That's fine.
That's all the vote I need.
Yeah, and if we're unhappy, then we just point toward Mark.
Yeah, then we'll displan you.
That's why I'm here.
So we're going to do virtual.
We're going to go back for the rest of the month and see whatever comes out of the state, which will have to come out by the 30th, because the order expires the 30th.
Just next month, then?
Yeah, it's really next council meeting. It's one council meeting, two weeks.
And a planning commission meeting.
And a planning commission meeting.
What about the council monthly workshop? Have a workshop on the 7th?
All right, so it's two. Are we having the?
Are we doing a workshop on that?
I'm going to ask, I've got subpoenaed to appear in a trial that day.
Even better.
I don't have a lot of.
For you.
For Mark.
I was, I'd like to be able to skip the September. It's the same week as Labor Day and.
We're fine with that.
I am good with that.
It's the day?
The 7th.
The 7th, okay.
Don't pull our arm.
Yeah.
So hard to give up. All right, so you have your direction?
Yes.
We are concluded on that. We can move on? All right, I see that bunch of head shaking, so we'll go on to 11, council-initiated business. Councilwoman O'Driscoll, do you have anything?
I do not.
Crosskin, Norton, I also have nothing. Go on to 12, information items.
I think so. What I shared with you and Christine and Mark might be.
I would share that. It was good.
All right, let me see if I can dig it out here.
I have it if you.
Okay, so the state auditor's office has a dashboard that they put out of the most at-risk cities, ranging from number one, the most at-risk, all the way down to number 460, the least at-risk in California. Those numbers came out fresh, very recently, I think yesterday, if I'm not mistaken. And they are showing that Lincoln is at number 350.
Where it's good.
Where a bigger number is better.
Lower is better.
Yeah, you do not want to be number one in this at all. So number 350 out of 460 cities for the 1920 fiscal year. And just a little context for that, we were at 328 in 1819, which was the audit year. So that was the worst of them, was all the way down at 328. We were 419 in 1718, and 451 out of 460 in 1617. A little more context, Roseville is at 208, and Rockland is at 192 for 1920. So good numbers, heading in the right direction.
At risk for what?
Financial risk.
Financial risk, yeah.
There are.
You're raising, like, your reserve, like, you know.
If you go onto the dashboard, they break it down to certain categories, green, red, yellow. And they actually do a map of the cities and color-code them as well, so.
At risk for never getting the Super Bowl, or?
No, no, no. Fiscal risk. Remember, it's the Audit Committee, Joint Legislative Audit Committee, which I always found interesting that on the one side, even during the audit, we had good, solid numbers, which I think is largely the policy side of the equation, and the other, the audit explored some of our internal operations.
They're saying it's at risk for going bankrupt.
Well, ultimately, I suppose, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Financial collapse, which could end in bankruptcy. I think from the state's perspective, they don't want to have to interfere and jump in and buoy somebody up.
I thought it was interesting, so thank you for sharing that. Councilwoman Crosskin, did you have anything? Councilwoman Crosskin, did you have anything?
No.
Artson? I also have nothing, so we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and thank you staff for coming for this.